Okay, good evening, good evening. I would like to call it to order the work session of the Board of Education for August 27, 2025. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. The first item is adoption of the agenda for August 27, 2025. Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, the agenda is adopted as presented. The consent agenda includes routine items approved together unless a member requests removal. Would anyone like to remove an item? May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 3A through J? May I have a motion?
Subway.
Thank you, Board Member Cathy, second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Alexandria. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 3A through J carries. So next, we would like to welcome Chief Academic Officer Tia Cornell and Assistant Superintendent of Planning and Accountability, Tyrone, and Secondary Schools, Tyrone O'Mealy, which who will lead us through the data dashboard presentation. And before we do that, actually, we would like to bring up or say congratulations to Sarah. If you don't mind standing up, she will be a big picture. Welcome to Schenectady.
It's two Sarahs now.
Yeah, it's two Sarahs.
Two Sarahs.
And then we should...
John.
Tyrone needed a not Sarah.
John Pisa.
Congratulations. Okay, so now, Ms. O'Mealy and Ms. Corneal.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
So I just, before we get started, it was a true story. Someone came up here last time presenting without me, and I felt by myself. I won't say who they are.
Howard. We're ready tonight, though.
We're ready tonight. So tonight, we'd like to present on our new data visualization tool, aka the Data Dashboard. We're limited. I'm proud to say our team members, our proud team members and colleagues will present a bulk of the presentation. I can say this was a true collaboration between multiple departments and stakeholder groups. So tonight, we have with us Tracy Angelini, Director of Planning and Accountability. We have Natalie Cable, Manager of Dating and Reporting and Information. Erica McFarlane, Director of Student Support Intervention Services. Kurt Redman, Director of Instructional Technology. Chad Sitz, Principal of Powell Elementary School. And Christina Howard, Director, former Pleasant Valley Principal, and now the Director of Attendance and Behavioral Support. And one thing I'd like to do before we get into this presentation, if we take a look at the district vision. And it says, I'll read this, Schenectady City Schools will be a continually improving school district dedicated to excellence in teaching, learning, equity, engagement, and efficiency. And I think this Data Dashboard really emphasizes a continuing improvement and not improved element of data. So this is a must. So with that being said, I will bring up Natalie.
Tonight, we're excited to introduce our new data visualization tool, EduClimber, which will be replacing our current tool, which is Schoolzilla. The core purpose of having a data visualization tool is to equip our district leaders, educators, and stakeholders with real-time actionable data. So, and what's our why? So that every student's progress is visible, measurable, and meaningfully supported. This works, work aligns directly with our strategic plan objective to build a district-wide culture of data that drives both continuous improvement and personalized learning. In short, we're, our district is working towards a data that isn't siloed, delayed, or confusing, but instead a shared language for learning and progress. So we were facing two challenges. One, we had multiple data systems across our district, and leaders were often faced with delays in making timely decisions. And it was time to, in time to look at the information and locate and compile that data. So it was leading to inefficiencies in our process. And there was also a lack of transparency for our families and community. Currently, there's no centralized dashboard where stakeholders can easily view district or school performance data. So our vision and where we really want to go is to create a centralized, user-friendly dashboard that visualizes key metrics at the district, school, and student levels. A unified data culture where equity, excellence, and timely intervention are not just aspirational goals, but a standard practice. And a public-facing dashboard so our families and communities have access to clear, transparent data that helps build shared responsibility for student success. This would be more than just replacing our old data visualization tool, Schoolzilla. It's really a shift in how we support our educators, empower our families, and most importantly, serve our students. And EduClimber supports our dedication to equity, excellence, and making decisions that prioritize our students. I'll now turn it over to Erica McFarlane.
Hello, so we always want to make sure we're aligning to our strategic plan. As you can see, we identified two of our pillars. The student graduate success, which is based on data-driven decision-making. And passionate people, we want to make sure that our staff have the empowerment that they need with the data that they need. I'm just going to go off script here a little bit and say that really efficient systems is key to this. I do believe that MTSS will be able to really take off with, you know, having these systems all in one place so everybody has this access. And then for our partnerships with families and community, I mean, we're trying to be as transparent as possible and keeping, you know, our stakeholders out in the community, having the knowledge that they need to have about the district. So it really is all four of our pillars. And then we picked two. There are a lot of policies that this supports as well because as a data-driven school district, it's really essential that all of our decisions, whether it's due to budget interventions or any of that, is based in data and that people have the data accessible to them in a timely manner. Right now, the data's in all different places. And what we're finding, and especially me and my role and Christina for MTSS, is we go to buildings and they're like, where do we find that data? How do we get that data? We have to put a request in to get it. This way, people will have that right at their fingertips and it will be accessible. So you can see with continuous academic progress, we're going to be able to look at the data in a timely manner. Day to day, it will be there. And our interventions will be able to be based on all data that we have. It will also allow students, as they move from one school to another, to have all that data follow them in a more seamless manner. Right now, we have kind of a choppy system where some of the data is attached to the student in Infinite Campus. Some of it's in Google Docs. And we really want that data to follow the students as they go along. So they go from one school to the next, the data goes with them, and their plan and their programming starts right in there. Next, I think is Tracy, Christina, and Beth.
So we're here to talk about the timeline and the process of the work. This was over a year process that we engaged in. Initially, we set a purpose for the committee and created some team norms to ensure that we followed that process with fidelity. We created a vision for the work that we were going to do around identifying that system, normed on terminology to make sure when we were talking about different things, we were all using the same language. And then finally, we created a subcommittee that designed a rubric so that we were looking at each product through the same lens and scoring it the same way.
So the first thing we did with creating that rubric is we looked to create subcategories, and we created four big subcategories in that rubric. And then within that, we then created indicators underneath each of those subcategories that was sent out with the RFP and what we were using as the rubric to identify if that company was able to meet that or not meet that criteria that we needed to support our students and our staff here in Schenectady. And then when those two things came together, we drafted our first rubric.
So the draft of the rubric then went back to the larger committee to get the stakeholder feedback from the whole group. I do want to mention, we had some categories that were sort of non-negotiables from the start. So for instance, edLaw 2D compliance and making sure, you know, we were set with data privacy was very important when we're talking about a product like this. So that was something that we knew immediately would be a yes or no of whether we were going to consider products or not. Being sure that it was data compliant, edLaw 2D, and had different levels of access for whether it's teacher level, administrator level, and then what community members can see on that dashboard as well. So the larger stakeholder group gave feedback, and we finalized the rubric, which kind of led us to the RFP process.
So the RFP process established by New York State Education Department, but also followed by our Business Office protocols, helped us to design the RFP, put it out to the public using the dates associated with how to construct the RFP. We came up with a committee from what everybody has already explained. Once the RFPs were all received, we brought the committee back together, reviewed the RFPs in more or less a structured way because we didn't, I didn't review every one of them, but we all provided evidence and information to inform the group. And then from that, selected our top vendors. And then we established a presentation process where certain vendors were invited to come in to present to us. And once we were moving towards our final selections, we brought in our Assistant Superintendent of Planning and Accountability to work through that process as well. And he was part of that process, too. And now we are at the last phase of communicating to you, the vendor that we've chosen, EduClimber, who will be presenting in just a moment to show you what the dashboard's capable of. And we're ready for the development of the actual dashboard. So in order to explain that to you, I'll turn it back over to Natalie.
So we've officially begun our onboarding journey with EduClimber, and I'm excited to be part of that implementation piece. And it's essential to acknowledge as well that this is a collaborative effort. It's all the department principals. But I really want to also acknowledge our data team who's been instrumental in those, these kickoff meetings and starting to, the data ingestion process. So as you can see here, we've had a kickoff meeting in July where we worked with Renaissance to align our project scope and sequence, confirm our onboarding timelines, set up project milestones, define our action steps, and to guide our established district goals and vision of what we want this product to do for us. We've done now the Planning and Design Workshop, which is really, it's a collaborative piece with EduClimber to make sure we're doing security settings, user permissions, and then putting in the configuration pieces that we really need for the districts. For instance, making sure our learning, our leadership communities are included in our dashboard. Then we had our data ingestion call. That means taking our information from our student management system, Infinite Campus, and bringing that into EduClimber. And as of yesterday, we are now, you can see that we're in between. We have officially moved into the Attendance and Behavior Workshop, where there'll be a 90-minute workshop where we'll talk about attendance and behavior and what we want to see in those dashboards. So there'll be an internal group that'll work together and then really help us to configure what we want that to look like. The same will be done for our gradebook and performance, our assessment workshop, our system readiness call, make sure we're ready for implementation. And then our system management is to make sure that we're validating the data, make sure it's accurate because that's important when we're looking at the data pieces that were, it's accurate when we're making these important decisions. And to make sure we're maintaining the product. In terms of the implementation and rollout, it's, we really have a two- to three-year implementation plan to make sure that we ensure all stakeholders are effectively trained and positioned to fully utilize and benefit from this platform. And without further ado, I'm going to now turn it over to Nathan Farrell, who is the Account Executive of Assessment and Analytics at Renaissance for EduClimber, to show you a sneak peek of our product.
Mind if I just pause? Running out of juice. Good evening, thanks for, thanks for having me. This is exciting. I love working with districts and being back, speaking to a Board of Education, knowing everything you all do in your roles. This is really exciting. And another great element of how EduClimber can be utilized in a district for very specific purposes. I'm going to show a couple, couple screens very quickly and go through just kind of a high-level overview. The one thing that I thought was so great, and I can't remember if it was one of the first slides, but it really spoke to great data visualization. But what are we going to do with it? And that's really the power of a platform like this, what it allows you to do, both in terms of internally, but also those external communications with your community, the different stakeholders, parents, caregivers, guardians, and everyone in between. I'm going to steal your line earlier. This is what I always call the back of a baseball card view, but now it's the back of an All-Star card view because our students are the All-Stars, right? Granular level, you see a picture of every single student in your district. And really, some of those things that have been mentioned in terms of all the different places that data lives, now encapsulated into one single screen. So that when I, a principal, an administrator, an interventionist, a counselor, a teacher, whomever, is talking with a student, I see a different picture of a lot of different things going on in this one place. The power of EduClimber is that it can do so many different things. And in each district's own stage of their journey, using something like this, it fits in with that particular stage, customized directly to what the district is, the goals of the district, your mission, your vision, and then all those workflows and processes that you have. This is a tool that's designed around those. So something I'm going to talk, just focus on tonight is our achievement dashboards. And when we think about a single place that we can use to highlight and look at all of the different types of data points that matter to our district for purposes of accountability and understanding where we are and where we want to be as our students go throughout their journey in the district. A lot of different dashboards in my demo account. But what I hope you're starting to see is a lot of different types of themes because there's so many different types of themes that we're working on. College, career, workforce readiness, disproportionality, our overall district dashboard with every single piece of data we might be interested in. Or, one for purposes of this, that works out well tonight, a Board of Education Achievement Dashboard. So this is something that, depending on what your goals are as a district, you have these dashboards that reflect all the key pertinent points of data that you want to have to be able to track, but also what you might want to communicate out to your community in different ways. So as we want to, hey, we have an attendance initiative, and we've tackled chronic absenteeism this year. We want to celebrate some of the great strides we've made. All of these achievement dashboards can be public-facing, so we can share them to the community in a couple different ways. One way through this manner would be by putting it on the website. And in real time, that data syncing in the website, reflecting our data and our data-driven decision-making that's fueling everything we're doing. As I scroll through this page, just to give a sense, a little bit of what it can do is we can look at our ELA State Assessment data and see very specific points of data for, in this case, a number of different grade levels. And the at or above benchmark scores where I can drill into and see the specific students and then all the demographic data that might follow along with that. And as simply as I look at ELA State Assessment data overall, I can look at it by subgroup. Or maybe I want to look at our reading scores by growth. But I want data to be used effectively. I don't want to have to bounce from one screen to another screen or pull up one report or run some file and have to bounce all around. The beauty and at its core with something like EduClimber does is says, hey, let's take all of your different pertinent data and put it into one place so we can easily access it, so then we can make the decisions that we're trying to make. So from the particular reading benchmark assessments that you're using throughout the year to state assessment data, to how are we going to define what at-risk means? We might be using a particular assessment like FastBridge to look at students at risk in math. And seeing that data, not just in the moment, but also historically, by cohort, by building, by grade, whatever types of filterable data criteria you have is a, is a visualization that you can create specific to and important to you in Schenectady. EduClimber at its core is software agnostic. So I, Nathan Farrell from Renaissance, we have a number of different products that schools utilize. But EduClimber is software agnostic. We recognize schools use all sorts of different assessments and different student information systems and might change some of those assessments for universal screening or progress monitoring as things evolve and things change. The beauty of a platform like this is great. We want to change with you and customize this platform to bring in your data and whatever that is, and then customize it to be reflective of exactly what it is that you have. Not just from an overall assessment, like something, you know, another third-party provider, but also how do we define what's not proficient or below readiness or proficient? The defaults from a particular assessment, or you can create your own customized levels. We have districts all across New York State doing all sorts of customizations to say, hey, New York State says students are levels one, two, three, and four, and we understand that. But we have our own Level 1, 2, 3, and 4 students that go through our MTSS process and our own journey here in Schenectady. So we want to create our own types of parameters, our own types of performance bands and benchmarks. And we want to combine different data points to do that. Something like EduClimber gives you that capability to take basically everything and put it into one single place to ultimately drive what's our goal? Students successfully graduate and go on to future success, college, work, life, whatever that readiness standard is, and how we're going to decide how to visualize that from a data dashboard so that we can quickly access it and then work with that data to drive our decision-making. Am I out of time? All right, thank you very much, I really appreciate it. I'll talk for, no, I'll just, thank you very much.
So as has been mentioned already, we are currently in the development of the dashboard phase. And we've seen the timeline, and we expect to be able to provide you updates as we move forward. This will continue through the fall of 2025. And as updates progress, we will keep informing ELT on the use and the adjustments and any additions we want to make, including what you might have in terms of requests. The other thing to think about and is already mentioned is after the launch, our priority will be the targeted professional development we'll be offering to the stakeholders, the administrators, teachers, assistant principals, in different areas, whether it's a faculty meeting, a principal's meeting, superintendent's conference day, those kind of things. And just wanted to reference that it has been a collaborative effort. Responsible parties have been predominantly Office of Planning and Accountability, but also in tandem with Office of Teaching and Learning and Student Support Services.
Questions?
Before we begin, thank you, before we begin. I want to ground us in the board policy that frames this conversation. So it is, and it's not up there yet, but I'll just mention it to you. We have two guiding questions. And again, these guiding questions are not questions that we have to necessarily focus in on, but I do want to share those questions with you. And they are, how will EduClimber Dashboard support continuous academic progress and timely interventions? How will the system empower staff and strengthen culturally responsive instruction for all students? And how will transparent data sharing with families and community partners advance equity and trust? And I think they talked a little bit of, or somewhat about this, or a lot about this, but I also want us to ground in our policy. I also want to mention that each person, each board member may ask up to three questions in the first round with no follow-up, so everyone has equal time and will open up for additional comments if time permits. Okay, so we will begin. Board Member Cathy?
I was just going to ask, does this slice bread?
Future enhancement.
I was wondering how much data needs to be migrated from existing systems to, and how long that will take? I mean, you know, what is the timetable for that?
So the great part is, part of that data ingestion call was taking everything from Infinite Campus and bringing it to EduClimber. So we've already started that process, so there's actually historical data within the system already. However, we're waiting for some of those rosters to be completed so we'll be able to see 25, 25, 26 school years start to populate in there. So we've already started that. With things in Infinite Campus, we'll do our Attendance and Behavior Workshop next. Those pieces are already there, but it's making sure that we're saying, what do we want that to look like in the system? So the data's already being, being fed in, which is great. And then we'll, in the assessment workshop, we'll also make sure that, whatever we use EdocTrina as well and other platforms, we want to make sure we're getting those pieces in, so that'll take part in that workshop.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alexandria?
Um, we, I hear that it's forward-facing, right? But we didn't hear a lot in the presentation about how does that look from a parent's perspective? How much of that data is available to the parents?
So all of those dashboards, for instance, that I shared, those can be connected right to your website and then updated and synced in real time for, let's say, larger cohort-based data, building level data, things of that nature. From a parent, guardian, caregiver perspective, it will really depend a little bit on how you want to utilize the tool. So one of the features with an EduClimber, really powerful communication method is what we call smart forms. So imagine you're taking all of their attendance and gradebook data and putting it into this one report. And then also all of their reading and math benchmark data. And then all of their incidents that they've gotten from, let's say, disciplinary referral standpoint. All of those smart forms can be either sent individually or automated to be something that goes out to every single parent, guardian out there and their email address, and also can be converted into any language as well. So when we think about how we're going to communicate, some of that goes back to how do we want to leverage this tool to communicate to parents? So on parent-teacher conference nights, when I showed you that back of an All-Star card view, you could print right there a smart form that brings in every single pertinent piece of data for little Tanner Starr, who I had up on that account, and hand a parent something with all of the data that you want to be able to speak to them about. Here's their fall reading benchmark score. This is where we want to get to them, them to by the winter and then the spring. Here's last year's data if you want to do it. Those smart forms are 100% customized to the different types of fields you want to put in there. Maybe you want to add some narrative information. So when we think progress monitor and we look at, you know, both question one and three, and really two, here's, a smart form can do all of that because it allows you to create the type of manner in which you want to communicate to that parent, guardian. But also, how are we going to do that? Both face-to-face, both through electronic emails, automated in some cases, where your parents, a student that maybe misses five days and we start, or one out of three days, whatever we deem chronically absent, you could have an automated early warning system that immediately sends them an email communication which shows you, the district, all of the emails that went out, also with a place for the parent guardian to respond that they've received that notification. So when we think of real-time communication, a lot of this is about how do we become more efficient in how we do that? So this tool with your local processes and workflows of how you want to do it will be dictated. The tools capabilities get dictated a little bit by what makes sense for us in our building. So as a building-level principal, how do I want to use this to communicate with my parents? Well, I want to use it all right away, I just want to, you know, hit the ground running. But sometimes it might make sense to stagger that implementation of how we're going to use it internally, externally accordingly.
And as well, we have, at Infinite Campus, we keep all of our extracurricular programs, too. So putting my parent hat on for a second, we can also put that information on the dashboard. And then families also to understand what we have offering out there as well. So we can offer what we're providing, you know, in each different building. If there's after-school programming, what things are going on within the district that we can also put on that.
So we're assuming it'd be more user-friendly than Infinite Campus?
Yes, they're absolutely very intuitive, intuitive interface. We want to make it easy. I think of, like, if you go to, you know, the Schenectady Police Website, it's quick and easy and you just kind of quickly navigate things and you get the information you want. It's really important for families, we want to make sure that it's easy to access and very intuitive when you're looking at it. You know exactly what you're looking at.
And that was one of the criterias on the rubric. But how many times have you went to a website, used apps, like, I don't even want to use this thing anymore because it's too complex? You know, and that was, that was a must.
And I have one more, one more question. Are there levels to the access? Who and what data can be seen?
Absolutely, yes. We want, like, Infinite Campus, we have user permissions. So if you're a teacher, you see this. If you're an admin, you see this. So depending on your role, you have different access and user ability. We actually, I have, the Senior Data Analyst in our department is amazing, and he also automated those. So all of our admin, any new admin that come in, they automatically get the access that you need to. Teachers will automatically get that based on the rules and permissions that we set and part of, and part of our onboarding.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Alexandria. Board Member Jamaica?
Might be too granular, but that's fine. You mentioned sports?
Yes.
We have issues with communication with sports. Is this going to assist with any time a coach sends an email to the student? That parents then, like, if I log into Malia's account and volleyball, you know, practice has been changed, am I going to be able to see her changes to her volleyball schedule? Because some, like, super granular, like, that, just that? That's, that's the question.
I don't, this piece probably, I don't think there'll be any, like, a two-way kind of, like, where information comes in and then information's pushed, you know?
I'm, so I'm thinking, because you mentioned, you know, what's happening with sports. So there's a lot of things that happen with our sports. Whether it's that our kids have practice or the schedules for, for games, or if, if, I mean, there's behavioral piece, right? If a student is not doing the thing they need to do, if they've been suspended from sports for some reason. Like, there's lots of different pieces when you talk about how it's going to connect in the way of Infinite Campus that it does not right now.
So right now, Jamaica, and I want to get back to you with the response on this. We had some updates to Thrill Share, right? But I'd like Karen Corona to speak to that. So the product has been updated, so if you could... So if you give us tomorrow, I'll talk to her, then we can send you a response. I think that's most appropriate. I think that's what you're looking for.
Okay, sure.
And within Infinite Campus is a messenger system too. So I'm, to your point about, like, sports being canceled, there is communication if you are part of the parent portal. So flood, be part of the parent portal, which is great because we can, different buildings can kind of monitor what they send out. So you can have a message go out. So if there's something that's canceled, a message can go out to the family. So they get that, that message right.
It doesn't right now.
Can I speak to, so the other part, EduClimber does have a very different use case than maybe that communication about schedule changes on an everyday basis. But your other question is a great one. So coaches sometimes are frustrated because they can't get into the student information system because they don't have all their athletes on their team from a roster standpoint, right? So they might rely on other ways to find out about eligibility. So in something like EduClimber, we have a tool called Tags. And they're unique district tags. Varsity athlete, varsity volleyball, varsity basketball. And every student that participates in any extracurricular, you could use those tags for tracking and recognizing who's in what, who's doing what. But you also can use our threshold monitor as an early warning system. So any varsity athlete that's failing two or more core courses and missing more than three days can be flagged on this as now ineligible for that day's practice potentially. And that can be an automated type of report that's run, that can be sent right to the coach of that team. And they get a list of, hey, Tyrone, you missed three out of the last five days. Now you can't miss practice tomorrow, right? It's always Tyrone. But that's a way that you might use that for, like, specifically the, the sports part.
I, I appreciate that. And then I'll bring it back to the backend of, if the coach gets the notification, making sure the parent then gets the notification.
Thank you. Board Member Jamaica? Board Member Kathy?
Who is inputting to this system? I mean, what roles? What, is everybody? I mean.
Right now, it's, it's more of just the interface. There is a piece in terms of our implementation plan, there's an MTSS. Nathan talked about a form that you can input information. So people can, our Schenectady School District staff can put information in. We're not at that point yet. But right now, it's just visiting, looking at the data, making sure it's reliable and it is accurate.
So at the end of a term, for example, the semester, whatever we call it, would the teachers put the individual grades in for students?
In Infinite Campus, that'll be our main kind of hub. So they'll still collect that information, they'll put their grades in. And then that information will go into EduClimber. So there is a sync that happens that will take in that information, so it'll automate the system.
So we'll still be using Infinite Campus?
Great question, yes. We're gonna, we'll still use Infinite Campus, that's still our main student information system. This is just an add-on piece, so we can visualize everything within the system.
I don't know where I am in questions, but my last one was going to be, what other school districts in New York State have used this, are using this system? And how much, how much experience have they had with it?
So everything is through the BOSIs for purposes of purchasing. Throughout, I cover all of New York State. So from the very northern part of New York down to Long Island to western New York, a number of districts and everywhere in between. In the capital region alone, Bethlehem's been using EduClimber now, Niskayuna. A laundry list throughout the Lower Hudson, Westchester area, from Kingston to East Ramapo to, you know, Northport, Northeastport in Long Island, out in the western New York, Royalton-Hartland and Niagara Wheatfield. I can get you a full list. But I, I guess what I liked in, in saying all of that is geographically speaking, what's, what's nice is small schools, very large districts like Schenectady, and then ones in between. Doesn't matter the demographics, everyone has a very similar need in terms of how to use data to drive decision-making. So we have districts all across New York. And specifically in the capital region where I live, which has been great, is we've really grown the footprint of it through our partnership with NAREC and the BOSIs. Not just as a purchasing vehicle, but also how they can support the tool for additional resources. Because not only are we edlaw 2D compliant when you go through the BOSIs and all of that, you know, student data security. Renaissance has also undergone what's called the SOC 2 compliance security audit, which is another level of data protection and privacy. So we take, you know, how we protect data very seriously and have a pretty good track record with working with districts all throughout the state and all different, you know, sizes of, of districts as well.
How do you foresee our teachers using this, let's say, in PLCs or exact, like, what do you foresee? What is the dream?
The dream, I'm gonna have Eric up here? The dream is, I mean, well, I'm gonna say my dream, I'm gonna say my dream. As a former teacher, this is, so if it's connected to the gradebook, if it's connected to assessments, and rather than digging through my gradebook, going to Infinite Campus, I have it all there in front of me. So now you give a common assessment, right? You have all that data right there. Tyrone's struggling. I know why. I could pinpoint exactly where, right? And so it's really utilizing during team time, utilizing during PLCs. And this really brings everything in one place, so they're not searching for it. You know, it's, you know, Infinite Campus is pretty cumbersome if you're going through that program, you know? So if we could bring it and they could customize their own dashboard, they could really progress monitor or watch how that specific class is doing. They could cut, they could create their own cut scores, like, hey, listen, I really want to see how students are performing on this, and I'm gonna watch that. So I, I think this is, it's gonna take some time because we have to build capacity. We have to build user, how individuals use the system. But I think, what I've noticed over the last couple of years, if we're patient, if we do it correctly, I think we'll get there.
Thank you. And then I had a question from earlier on, I think it was Natalie talked about the rubric. I was just, or maybe it was you, but I was just wondering, what are those four categories?
Special shout-out to, like I said, one thing I gotta emphasize, the team. We spent a year doing this, and just every angle possible, they're amazing. And this is the rubric that we used.
It could start needing larger fonts.
And I know, listen, you're gonna see me, I can't see either, so it's real. So those are the categories. I gotta take my glasses off. Safe and secure system, ensure ease of use, like we said before. Consolidation of all data in a central location and facility consists of data collection. So those are the categories, that's our rubric, and we have extensive process around that. And I think we had, how many products did we have?
I think it was nineteen.
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 That's what, like, what was nineteen?
Nineteen different products. So I do have, my last question. Because I know that the elementary, and correct me if I'm wrong, I know that the elementary schools and middle schools, they have PLCs. I know the high school does as well, but it's kind of, the high school and the satellite. So I'm wondering, because in essence, from what I'm hearing, you know, you want this to be a collaborative venture. So I'm wondering, especially at the secondary level, high school primarily, are we thinking about putting time in the schedule so that the teachers can meet together to look at the data?
So I spoke to Mr. Green today, we meet one-on-one. So I said, Mr. Green, now that the freshman academy is gone, there's less, I mean, try to get not technical. There's less scheduling constraints. That means there's not a lot of conflicts, right? So I said, what percentage of your faculty have common, I didn't say PLC? It says eighty-five percent, which is a massive number. So I think, I think we're in the right place. Tia's working on coordinating PLCs at the elementary level. Middle school has shifted from just team time. You know, I was a middle school teacher, it was, you had your social studies, math, and English to content area team time as well. So I think just making those shifts slowly. So I think it's building that structure for teacher collaboration. And then we can start adding tools that's gonna make the time more productive.
Thank you. You have a board member, Kathy?
What are the, the, sorry, I go back to things like mainframes and so forth. What are the, the physical requirements of, of a system such as this in terms of the computers? The, you know, where is the, where does the data reside? Is it in the cloud? Is it, what, how, how, how does this work?
How does it work? So I'm gonna bring Natalie up here, but I know that.
Because we got nineteen, you know, nineteen buildings.
So it's really everything's fed through, and I want to make sure I, I'm saying this correctly. I'm gonna take a crack at this. So it's pulling from Infinite Campus, right? But it's also pulling from our other software system as well that it's able to connect to. And so I think having a great partner is NAREC, they're able to build that connectivity. So I don't know what the cloud is, they tell me what a cloud is. But wherever that information's stored, I'll be honest with you, it's pulling from there.
No, that, that's, that's pretty much it. EduClimber at its core is gonna pull from all of those root origin systems. You start with your SIS, Infinite Campus, your state assessment data that comes out of Level One at the end, you know, always too late every summer, we want it earlier. We upload all of that, which NAREC would support, helping, you know, do that. And assessment platforms, so I, I know we're using iReady and Schenectady. That data, we automatically connect with that. So on a nightly basis, that data is pulled from the iReady and where it lives in secure file transfer protocol folders, SFTP folders. It pulls from those into the secure EduClimber folder and then lives there. But you could also, if you had, let's say, an Excel file as a Google Sheet up there, and you're like, hey, I want this in EduClimber, because this is a survey we took amongst our board and community. We want to visualize that. Well, you can upload basically any CSV file in that format and then visualize that data. So that could live there, both holistically speaking for the district or also when, you know, Tyrone mentioned, common assessments. As a social studies teacher, I give my pre and my post, I might, oh, let's go. But I could, you know, have that as another data point that's very specific to me and my class, my pre-post information. We want that to go into that student profile as well. So it just depends on where the data lives, and then we find a way to bring it in, either automatically or through, let's say, a manual upload, based on whatever cadence makes sense. Former principal, I didn't want to manually upload anything. Hey, Brian, here's the file, please automate as much as you can. Do all the backend work to get that to happen. I didn't know how to do it, but I'd ask Brian to do something like that.
So would the teams be able to customize certain things in the platform?
Oh, certainly, yeah. Yeah, so everything is really about, again, and that planning and design process that was spoken to and that, that onboarding process. What, how does it fit into our unique world here in Schenectady? Well, the elementary building is different from the high school. I'm not in the high school as concerned with, you know, certain reading benchmarks as I am core course grades that I want to see from Infinite Campus. But for certain students, I need their reading scores because I want to cross-reference how they're performing academically in a course with how their reading level is. So every building, every grade, right, you're gonna have different elements of how you want to look at that data. And every principal is ultimately gonna create their own custom data walls. Where I pull up my middle school six or eight building and I have the data that I'm living with every day. That's also part of our bigger K-12 picture. But as a middle school principal, I'll have my own view of how I want to look at certain things.
Thank you.
So who's the owner of this system for, you know, who is that, that I call for troubleshooting?
Us, data team. Yes, so we, we would be the ones who would help troubleshoot any user access, things like that. But as Nathan said before, we have a great partner with NAREC. So if we can't answer the question, we can always ask NAREC as we're in that learning phase. And I wanted to also answer your question too about, one of the pieces that our Senior Data Analyst, he can create scripts. He is a very technical individual who makes our lives very, much, much easier. So in our, in Infinite Campus, we have a data utility. And what happens in there and how we connect with EduClimber is there's scripts that come, go in, and it connects right there. He also does our ClassLink. So ClassLink, it'll be a quick, easy access for teachers, for admin to quickly get into that and web-based, so that they can easily access the information. But data team will be here to assist in this implementation.
Thank you. Thank you. Next step. So are you looking for us to approve this at the next board meeting?
Because it's a BOSIs product, right? Yeah, so we were able to move forward with it. And actually, it was the best product at the best price. So that's, and I think that was a key component as we're looking at various vendors. That, that was a lot to this particular, robust price point on this particular product. And we're gonna get it supported through BOSIs.
And with the, with the rubric as well, we also made sure we helped with this process to make sure we, we had everyone fill out the survey themselves, the rubrics, that we can then make sure that this was the highest scoring.
And how many people were on the committee approximately?
Okay, so, so we didn't even talk about the committee. So let me just speak to that. So initially, and I don't want, I believe, we wanted to make sure we had a robust stakeholder group initially. So we had, tell me if I'm wrong, about thirty-five or forty people. So we had individuals that were parents, maybe more, firms. Initially, parents, we, we wanted different voices to ensure that we're choosing teachers, you name it. And it says, why is it, it matters. Because if we're saying this is really for everybody in the district, we want to have true representation from safety. We've been here long enough, we've built relationships, why don't I have the space? Because it matters, your voice matters, you have to know about this. So hopefully, as utilization increases, those groups that you typically don't think that use the product, they said, no, I know what this is for, and I know how to get information if needed. So then what we had was a larger stakeholder group. Then as we got into, like, picking the product, it just got smaller and smaller until we, till we, for example, this particular, the rubric selection, there was about eight of us.
And our P, there was a color, eight as well, to go through the process, making sure we had all those P deliverables and everything in that.
Thank you.
One more, okay, one more. Is there an interface to SED that makes reporting to the various SED systems easier?
Is there, for this particular product?
If I can guess without the, because they're connected with NAREC, it would make the connection with SED information very smooth and seamless. I work very closely with NAREC because of testing. And I'm sure we can make that happen because, again, with the connection with NAREC, they're the direct contact with SED. Does that answer your question?
Where are you at?
That was possibly yes.
Yes, yeah.
That was a yes.
We have a, that'd be a yes. I know the NAREC people out there.
BOSIs, so.
Yeah, that's interesting.
So let me clarify a question. Are you asking if this product will connect and report our information?
Or will help? Eventually, or make it, make it more easily done. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, we have various information that we have to give to NICEEd.
So, oh, no, not, no.
No, not, no.
I, I have the pleasure of doing all that, the state reporting stuff. So we downloaded extracts from Infinite Campus and then uploaded those all to the state. And then all those, that information goes into the New York State Report Card. However, since we have that information in Infinite Campus, we'll be able to share pieces of that, that dashboard through EduClimber. So we, we'll still have to state report, and then all that information will then come up on the New York State Report Card. But we'll be able to see that information even sooner, and we'll be able to catch some air. So part of the attendance and behavior dashboard, it will also check for discrepancies, so we can make sure our data reporting is even cleaner.
I just wondered if there was an interface with NICEEd that would allow this, not, not to happen automatically. I never want to have any of it happen so automatically that there's no eyes on it. But at the same time, would facilitate putting into their various systems, so.
Thank you. We're gonna move to number five, or number six, should I say? I move that we enter into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation and contrast. No action will be taken afterward, and the meeting will be adjourned upon conclusion. May I have a motion to enter executive session? Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Thank you, Board Member Alexandria. All in favor? Okay. Have a good evening, everyone.
I'm a voting member, I'm a non-voting member.